Our invocation remains standing for our pledge of allegiance. Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together, be with us in all discussions that take place here today, make us ever mindful of the needs of others and provide us wisdom as needed. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, indivisible and just as for all.
With that, if you call the roll, please.
Donald S. Case.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh. Tammy J. Cogel.
Here.
Lisa E. Stett.
Here.
Derek G. Hickey.
Yeah.
Edward B. Higgins.
Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
I'd like you to note that under new business, item E, EA Laney easement, we'll need to change the order on that. We'll have a discussion about a couple of items pertaining to that in closed session and then that'll be on the agenda after closed session.
Mr. Hayes, it's appropriate, I'd like to ask for an addition to the agenda. If Mr. Hans feels up to it, I'd like to have a little information regarding how our facilities held up being used as shelters.
We could add that to the information portion of the agenda.
That'd be perfect.
At that time, we could have Mr. Hans update us on that. Good idea. Any other additions or deletions?
So that'd be item E under information.
And also during the closed session, when we break for that, can we also add something about whatever numbers we need to do for employees as well?
Do what now?
If we do the closed session portion of the meeting and you state whatever statute allows us to talk about property and whatnot, could we add an employee portion on that as well, please?
Sure.
Yeah, it's already, it's one of the personnel, it's one of the reasons we have to coin.
Okay, perfect.
Move for approval as amended.
Where was it we put, did Mr. Hans?
It'll be item E under information.
Second page.
Oh, okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Item three, approval of the minutes for my regular meeting,
January the seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Move for approval.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item four is a call to the audience. We have two calls to the audiences, one for agenda items, one for non-agenda items. No one signed up for anything pertaining to agenda items, but we do have a sign up for the call to the audience, non-agenda items. But in a sense, it is an agenda item, so thought, of course, feel free to stay for the whole board meeting, but we're going to move the call to the audience for the non-agenda items up at this time. So at this time, I'll call on the only speaker to sign up is Jenny Leeds.
Thank you for doing that. My name is Jenny Leeds and I'm a teacher at Ogden Elementary. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the teachers and staff members at Ogden and also share some of my thoughts about the state of public education in North Carolina. At Ogden, we want to send a clear message to our elected officials that we strongly oppose many of the recent changes made to our profession. We know that it's very easy to get frustrated and just throw our hands up and do nothing, but doing nothing, being silent sends the message that we are okay with these changes. We will not be bystanders. We are actively seeking change. We do this by regularly sending emails encouraging our legislators to examine the negative impact many of these changes are having on our students and public education. As we reach out through emails, phone calls, and speaking opportunities like this, we demonstrate through, we demonstrate strength, professionalism, and most importantly, a positive and constructive approach. We've had two great examples to follow, Murray Middle School and you, the new Hanover County School Board, as you both stood up for public education by voicing your opposition to the top twenty-five percent resolution. We thank you for your courage and commitment. Today, I'd like to present Ogden Elementary's petition against the top twenty-five percent resolution. We oppose Senate Bill three sixty-one. We believe that this bill is based on three flawed assumptions. One, competition is the key to improving schools. Two, teachers can be motivated by cash incentives. Three, standardized test scores provide reliable evidence of accomplished teaching. This request is made in support by ninety-eight point three percent of our faculty and certified staff at Ogden. Now, a little bit about me. This is my nineteenth year as an educator in North Carolina. During this time, I've earned my National Board Certification, have renewed it, earned my master's degree in reading, was a teacher on loan, which allowed me to observe and mentor new teachers, and was selected as the two thousand eight, two thousand nine New Hanover County Elementary Teacher of the Year. I've experienced the highest of highs and the lowest of lows this year in my teaching career. My heart absolutely broke when I learned that legislators developed the plan to reward the top twenty-five and begin to phase out tenure. The high point was when I was sitting right over there at the December board meeting and watched you all present your resolution against the top twenty-five percent. Your actions lifted me up, repaired my broken heart, and put the wind back in my sails. You fired me up. I guess I was unaware of how alone I was feeling in my personal fight for public education. I'm almost two-thirds of the way through my teaching career and have never felt more inspired. During these next eleven-plus years, I will work nonstop to make a positive impact on public education in North Carolina. I want education in our state back on the positive track. I believe in my heart, it's not too late. Look at all of us here in this room this Saturday morning who've made a commitment to education, board members, central office staff, teachers, parents, and friends. I ask those of you who are here today to please continue to advocate for our students, teachers, and the education profession. How can we best work together to begin fixing some of the big issues in education like teacher pay and excessive testing? We all play a part. How you play your part is up to you. I know we can make a difference. Let's aim higher. Thank you.
Thank you. I might also add that there is a lot taking place. And yesterday, for example, even in my feeble condition, I was on the phone quite a bit with the Chair of the Board of Education from Wake County and also Guilford County. And we're going to get together Thursday of next week, if I'm still among the living, if I can make it up there, to Greensboro to meet on the topics that you're talking about and some other things that I know we as a board have expressed our concerns about. We all share those feelings and many other school boards across the state. But we're doing this and I think it'll mean more, not coming under the auspices of the North Carolina School Board Association, but just as a group of school systems that are concerned. I mean, they're doing things also, but then also with the, just taking it upon ourselves to meet, I think it will, so we'll keep everybody posted. Thank you. Next item, item five, administrative personnel. Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
All right. It's sort of a bittersweet one because obviously this will be Ms. Dale Pelzy-Beckton's last board meeting.
Does she have Hank? I don't see Kleenex over there. I don't see a box Kleenex, Dale.
And I would like to take this moment to publicly thank Dale for her service to not only the Hanover County but to the students throughout the state. Thank you, Dale.
Now you need those Kleenex, right?
But with someone moving on comes an opportunity for other folks to move up and grow. And it is with great pleasure that I'd recommend Dr. LaShawn Smith to be the new Assistant Superintendent for Instruction. She is currently the Executive Director of Instruction. She previously served as our Priority Schools Coach for New Hanover County. She was the principal at Sunset Park Elementary, Murray Middle Elementary, and Assistant Principal at Williston Elementary. Her contract will be in effect until June thirtieth, twenty seventeen. She has a background in special ed. She taught special ed at Leland Middle School, received her doctorate in education and her master's degree in school administration from UNCW. And she has several guests with her today. Dr. Smith, you want to introduce who's with you today? So with that, I would recommend approval for her as Assistant Superintendent for Instruction and Academic Canability.
Move for approval. Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? It is approved. Now, item six, under information. Item A, policy for first reading, sixty-four fifty, grievance procedure for employees. Appendix B, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I'm going to ask Dr. Wellmers if he will share this with the board and the community members.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. And I want to thank the Policy Committee for working with Mr. Bowler and I on this policy. The grievance is a long and very important policy that we need to get done correctly to both support the school system and the employees of the school system. The revised policy that we're looking at, sixty-four fifty, basically reiterates that the board believes that grievance issues need to be solved at the most informal levels of administration and supervision, should be done at that level first and hopefully be corrected there. It defines the basis of what actions the supervisor or school system has taken that are grievable, what can employees grieve, defines actions the school system or supervisor has taken that are not grievable. This would include evaluation, teaching and work assignments, employee transfers, employee extra duty assignments. It requires the grievant to clearly state the remedy they are seeking. In other words, what do we want done? What is it that we need to meet to make this better? It establishes a formal process and steps for the grievant to follow, going, moving through the supervisor, the direct supervisor, the Director of Human Resources, the superintendent, and finally the school board. And it establishes a process and steps to follow which allows for discretionary appeals, giving employees a better right to be heard by the board on issues that are somewhat gray or nebulous and how they need to be handled. So it gives them better rights there. So I think the changes strongly helped the school system and helped the employees of the school system.
One question I have, and I was just skimming this again, and I don't, it seems like I'm reading something else. I'm not really sure what I read the first time, but I thought it was this policy. Was it taken out, I know initially, or it's always been accepted that at the different levels, the grievant may have someone with them, whether it be a minister, husband, wife, whatever. That was not taken out?
No. You can still have a representative at the formal grievance process. There's two basic kind of steps you're going. One is an informal process. That's where you're meeting with your supervisor to go over. You're not really going to have a representative at that because-
But now before, they could, though.
No, no.
Not in the informal.
Not, yeah, not in the informal.
I thought on before, wasn't it a four-step process?
Yeah, but that's the, and the formal step, once they move, I've written it down now, this is what I want, I'm moving this formally, then they can have a representative. In the informal process where I want to meet with you just to share what's wrong with me, or what, not what's wrong with me, but what's happened to me, maybe what's wrong with me, I don't know. That may, that may work better. But in other words, what has happened that I'm grieving, I need to meet with my immediate supervisor to let him know because the situation was, we, the supervisor didn't know. They didn't know what steps they could take. They didn't know there were things that could be done. All of a sudden, there was agreements at a higher level. In that informal process where we want it solved, there isn't a representative with the individual. It's the employee and the supervisor.
You're like the teacher, say, and a principal.
Right.
That's your first level.
That's your first level.
None representation.
That's right.
All right. If they're not happy there, then deal that to the principal or supervisor.
That's right.
Representation there?
That's right. They can have representation there. Once it becomes formal, we feel like they should have representation. But when it's just, if it's just Dr. Holliday and I and we need to talk about what's going on, I don't want to add another person into that to ramp that up. It needs to be us so we can just share. That's the goal. If we can solve it right here, that just, that makes it better.
And I can assure you, as we went through this, I took the role of that classroom teacher because having been there, what I would expect, and I think that informal meeting certainly can resolve a lot. If you go in with a positive attitude of what you need and something concrete written down, try to leave the emotions back. And the principal realizes that they have a, principals realize they have a responsibility to resolve it right there and to work with that teacher or that concerned employee. So this makes it much clearer and a little bit better organized to find where you are in your complaint process.
I just want to have a clarification as I read it. I understand going to the principal, if I have a complaint or grievance or whatever with another teacher or with somebody else in the school system, what happens if my grievance is with the principal himself or herself? I mean, it almost, I understand what you're saying, but it almost sounds like it might be an act in futility.
Well, and the policy addresses that. It's a very good point. If the, if my supervisor is the person I'm, is the person I'm grieving against, you can jump over the informal process and go straight to the formal process.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure that was, that was still in.
We, the problem that we've had is we've had people come to us with a grievance against their principal, for example, and the principal doesn't know anything about it. They didn't even know that there was an issue. Maybe they said something, maybe they made a decision one day that impacted the faculty, and this one teacher was upset about it and the principal could have rectified it but didn't even know it existed. And suddenly, we're in, we're in the formal process, we're doing all this, and in reality, if they just shared with the principal at that point, it could have been rectified.
Do we require them? I mean, if that, if that be the case, if that be the case, it would seem that, that the policy should mandate that you have to try to informally rectify the grievance with whoever you have the grievance with.
It does, yeah.
And it wouldn't necessarily be a, I mean, if I've got a grievance with another teacher, if I'm a teacher and I've got a grievance with another teacher, I have to go to the teacher before I go to the principal, which would still, I assume, be informal if I went to the principal.
That's right. You're still at the informal level. That was what we, and there is a requirement that you try to do that. But we also realize there's cases where that's just not going to work. Like you said, it's an exercise in futility. And if that's the case, you can jump straight into the formal and skip that and go on.
So the term formal is when it's putting it, put into a written request?
Right. That's right. You started the written process, the timelines and all that.
Okay.
And what we're going to do is, as administration is, if someone calls and says, I'm grieving against my principal, we're going to ask, have you shared with your principal your concern? Did you do that? And if the concern is really to a level that it doesn't need to be shared, it's jumped beyond that, we're going to move into formal. If not, we would really like for it to try to happen at that level.
Thank you.
That's the goal. Good point.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, that's on, anything else, Ms. Nichols?
No, thank you.
That's on for-
First reading.
First reading. Item B, J. T. Hogard High School International Baccalaureate Signatures Program. Appendix C, Dr. Markley.
We've got two presentations coming up that relate to signature programs that are at our, two of our high schools. I'm actually going to turn it over to the principals and let them take it from here. So, Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you very much. I haven't had a chance to practice this slide presentation with Ms. Adams, so I hope we have our coordination here. Very excited to talk to you about the International Baccalaureate Program, the IB program as it's known. And I want you to know, this has been a faculty-led inquiry process that we've been doing. It's really been spurred by the needs and the wants of the faculty. And I brought with me today Ms. Jean Hall. She's a French teacher at the school, and she's been leading this inquiry with the school and has a couple of words to share with you as well. The International Baccalaureate Program was actually founded as a nonprofit organization in Geneva, Switzerland back in the nineteen-sixties, so it has a long history. The mission itself, I highlighted three words here, inquiry, knowledgeable, and intercultural. One of the beauties, and I was talking with Ms. Pelzy-Beckton earlier, the more I learn about this, the more I see it benefiting in different ways. And when I first created this slide, I didn't underline caring, but as you start going through the process, it looks at graduating students and individuals who are not only knowledgeable, but their enquires are open-minded, they have a worldview of ideas, but they also care and have that community in mind when they do these things. Some things that make it special, a global recognition. As I said, it's been around for almost fifty years now. I think it's in almost a hundred and fifty countries, there are IB recognized schools. There are almost two thousand IB schools within these different countries. The United States has the highest number, around a thousand IB schools, followed by Canada and the United Kingdom, but they're throughout the world. I think North Carolina has sixteen or sixteen IB schools. Most of those are located in the Wake County area. There are no IB schools in southeastern North Carolina. The closest one to us, I think, considering what I consider southeastern North Carolina, is Jacksonville. So in our district, there's nothing really that offers that, a particular type of recognition. Also, it is recognized by most, if not all, colleges and universities, not just in North Carolina, but in the United States. So this diploma and the programs and the curriculum that it offers is something that is seen as valuable throughout the United States and internationally. The curriculum and pedagogy, the curriculum is very specific, it's very rigid as far as what they expect. And Ms. Hall's going to talk a little bit about what that curriculum looks like shortly here. The pedagogy, and with the pedagogy, it's very concept oriented. It's moving away from, and they've been doing this again for fifty years, but trying to move away from the two-dimensional pedagogy of focusing on skills and facts and moving to more of a three-dimensional pedagogy where we're looking at concepts, generalizations, and principles, and using those to go deeper into the meaning and knowledge that you're gaining and becoming critical thinkers. And one of the things I think is really great about this, that it really ties into what we're doing with the Common Core now, is that's what the Common Core really wants us to do, to move away from that two-dimensional type of teaching and learning to that three-dimensional type of learning. And I think it's really going to have a huge impact, not just on our students, but on our teachers and how we're, we're teaching. Oversight, if there is a certification process, you get certified. Once you're certified, the school is certified for seven years. It's very similar to the SACS accreditation. Every seven years, they come back out and recertify you. During that time, there's also lots of professional development. The initial professional development that teachers would get would be good for the seven years, but also there's ongoing workshops and different things that we'd be going continually able to go to. So we would have that professional development to be able to keep that certification yearly. It does focus on student growth and it talks about creativity, service, and reflection. And there's a core area of principles with the theory of knowledge, of community service, and of writing that really reflects this part. Not everyone fits into an IB learner profile. They're very specific at the type of students they're looking for for this. And again, you see those key words coming up again, caring, knowledgeable, inquire. But the one at the top is balanced. This is, and I kind of liken this to the sixteenth-century education of the Renaissance man. You have to be well-balanced in everything you do. You can't just be focused on math. You've got to have a strength in math, you've got to have a strength in social science, in English, in language, and also the arts. But it also talks about being involved outside of the school in extracurriculars. So it's looking at a very well-balanced individual that not just gets into college, but successful in college and is successful in the world outside of school. Now, the curriculum requirements, there is no difference in the curriculum requirements of the IB, an IB student as opposed to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction requirements. Still have to have four maths, four Englishes, three sciences, hopefully four, health and PE plus the twelve electives. So this core diploma is still the same. It's the electives, and we call them electives, but to the IB program, these are the cores that we'll be talking about. And I'm going to ask Ms. Hall to kind of step in and talk a little bit about these.
Thank you. So the IB program focuses only on junior and senior years. It's not open to, no matter where they are academically, credit-wise, chronologically, age-wise, it's only open to juniors and seniors. So the benefit of that for freshmen and sophomores is that it gives them the opportunity to pursue courses that they might put off into their junior and senior year, or perhaps they have ideations of taking early release, taking courses off campus or an NCVPS option and keeping them on the school grounds, keeping them there more interactive with what's going on in the school community. Dr. Sullivan spoke about the electives, what we typically see as the core courses. IB often refers to them as the electives because they see the core of the program as being the theory of knowledge, the extended essay, and I'll explain that just in a bit, and the creative, creativity, action, service component. Whereas these courses would be seen more as electives, of course, they're required to do those by the state. And DPI has the AIG Coordinator who also happens to be the coordinator for the AP coursework and IB coursework at this time. So her job is constantly to make sure that as schools who are IB certified say, hey, let's, can we offer this course, it's her job to align that or to see if there's enough alignment with what the current standards and requirements are to say, yes, that's a great fit, or no, it's still a little too far off. So we'll, we'll be sure to be offering the things we know have already been deemed acceptable. Studies in Language and Literature, you would see that normally as your English III, your English IV. And we'll talk a bit about how that can relate, senior year, how this can relate very easily to senior project and how those two things are intertwined through the extended essay. Individuals in Society, their social studies and history components, mathematics, and language acquisition. Foreign world languages are a big part of the IB as you would expect. And so students are highly encouraged as eighth and ninth graders to begin pursuing a world language so that by the time they leave high school, they can truly function in that language. Sciences and then the arts. So the Theory of Knowledge course is the core course of the program. They take this course over the course of the two years, their junior and senior years. And this is the course that helps them identify and explore the idea of knowledge, where it comes from, how do you acquire it, and then what do you do with it? How is it useful? And so the Theory of Knowledge course, which henceforth you may see referred to as TOEIC, it's the binder, it's the glue in the program. So it's a course in and of itself, and the teacher of that course has the responsibility of making sure that all of the courses are coming through that theory of knowledge so that the students are approaching the content in the right way. Service project, this is the creativity, action, service component. This is the insurer that when students are outside of school time, that they're being physically active, that they're exploring the artistic side of themselves or at least looking for it if they don't feel they have one, and then that they also are pursuing a service project. And this can go the course of the two years, but that's something they do on their own time. And it does have to span a hundred and fifty hours across the two years of the program. The extended essay is, which I think most in this room can identify with, is a dissertation of no more than four thousand words. This is also something that students work on in their own time. So they're asked to choose a topic of the other course, focus of their other courses, and pursue that topic really in-depth in the same way you would a thesis or a dissertation. And they are, they are connected with an advisor within Hogard to help them and advise them through that process. And that person would be trained in how to get them to the end of that as well. So again, we're looking at a student who, when we say inquiry-based student, someone who will seek out those opportunities on their own even when we're not providing them. So we want to corral those students and provide this program for them so that they can really run with it and have it mean something credit-wise for themselves as well. There are seven IB course exams. Every course has an exam at the end of it. They must score a minimum of four in the course to get IB credit. They must score a minimum of six to get most university credit. Universities will require a six or above. And then they must score a total score of twenty-four across the board. They can also garner a few points from the Theory of Knowledge course and the Extended Essay research to come up with that twenty-four, and then they are awarded the diploma. Program participation. What we're looking for in teachers initially is that they're interested, that they know something about it, that they themselves show that inquiry, that they've gone out and looked into the program and seen, yes, this is a good fit for me, or no, it doesn't really meet my teaching ideals. And teachers have been very fortunate. And teachers have been very forthcoming about, no, I love the AP program, I want to stick with it, this doesn't fit me. And then we have another camp of teachers who who feel exactly the opposite. So, we feel good so far about the number of teachers who who have expressed interest. The Teaching Profile and their expertise in their content area, and then their commitment level. So IB doesn't offer a course that would fit everyone in our building, but for those content areas where there are courses through IB, the teachers have expressed great interest. And then the commitment long-term, because again, this wouldn't go into effect until two thousand sixteen, seventeen. So with the current eighth-grade class would be the first junior cohort. For students, they would go through an application process. We're looking for a learning profile, how they see themselves, how they approach knowledge and education. Pre-IB classes, we hope in the tenth-grade year that they're running on an IB-like schedule and that the tenth-grade content teachers are also modeling their classes in such a way that the students can get a strong feel for what's in store for them should they decide to apply for the IB. And then we're looking for initially twenty-five students in the junior cohort, and when they would move to senior year, another twenty-five to come in. This is your part.
As you see, there are costs involved with this, and if you start looking at it just from the basis of that twenty-five-student cohort, it does look rather pricey. What I was, I was actually talking again with Ms. Pelzy-Beckton earlier, I I kind of see this similar to what we were doing years ago with with the Avid. Avid spread out into the school, the best practices. And as a long-term commitment, I see the fundamentals of this program, the the teaching, the pedagogy, uh, the the spirit of inquiry-based knowledge, spreading not from just this cohort of twenty-five, but to a graduating class of four hundred and fifty students and to a total class of a school of sixteen hundred students. So while the students that will actually be getting the diploma itself will be small, the effects that will have will be school-wide. So, uh, I do ask you to kind of keep that in mind as we look at this because it is an investment, and it is an ongoing investment, and it kind of becomes, we're not just an IB program, which is our signature program, but we've become an IB school where these best practices that along with what we're already doing in the classroom can be added to the school-wide, so that we're we're using these these types of 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 learning and teaching that really helps our students prepare for the next level after high school. That's all I have as far as present, any questions?
Any board members have any questions at this time?
Um, I do, excuse me. The service project and the essay, is that separated from the graduation project that's required by all students?
It, yeah.
Uh, it doesn't have to be. There are schools in, still in North Carolina who still conduct the graduation project who fit that niche very easily through Extended Essay and their Creativity Action Service. It's been no problem whatsoever. It covers senior project and then some tenfold in terms of the the capacity of of the program.
I see both of those being very compatible.
Mm-hmm. They they really are.
I would hope so, with that. Uh, what about students, other high school students, can they choose to come to Hogard now to be in this program?
I I would assume that would be still with the uh.
One of the intentions of Signature Academy was to open those up to allow students from other places to to potentially apply.
And would we be providing transportation, is that going to be another cost?
We don't currently provide transportation to the other two.
To the Marine Science?
Or to Marine Science.
Okay. So it'd be the same as those two programs, okay, that's great, thank you.
It would be something too, that not just transferring in their junior year, something to kind of go from eighth grade to ninth grade, that this is kind of their goal, their aim, so we need to kind of start preparing them for that along the way.
Dr. Sullivan, talk about the twenty-five number, is there any opportunity down the road to expand that a little bit?
I think, uh, Broughton, I think, has one of the largest ones in the state, which has eighty students that are involved in the program at one time. So it it can expand, but it 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 doesn't get a whole lot bigger than that.
Did eighty, excuse me, eighty that was the number?
I think it's eighty at Broughton.
Yes.
And in terms of rigor, this is an extensively rigorous program. This is, uh, not to be entered lightly by anybody who's looking for, uh, simply just to get an IB on their diploma. The IB curriculum is as rigorous, probably more rigorous in some respects than the current AP curriculum.
Dr. Sullivan also met with the Roland Grice community to kind of talk about what's at Hogard and what's coming in the future. And he had a long line of interests to talk more about this because his first class would be the rising ninth graders.
Just current eighth graders.
So this would not happen until two years, three years out.
I will add to that, though, I I was there at that meeting and had several parents approach me, and they knew, and the children who were there knew that this was the program for them, they knew. And I think that often we have students, and Hogard has a long history of AP coursework, and I I I just see faces popping up in my head now, students who pursue AP because intellectually, of course, they can handle it, but it's not exactly their learning style. And so to offer something else, something that also has a global perspective to it, which is the mainstay of the IB program, they're disappointed that they'll graduate before it comes.
On the cost, what expense is there to the individual students?
Individual student, if you look at for the registration, say, the students send this, there's a one-time registration fee of two hundred dollars, which covers the the whole program and processing, whatever they're using with that. Each exam costs a hundred and four dollars. Uh, so they have to take six exams, six exams, and they do have to take the exams to get the diploma. They can get the certificate without the exam, if I'm not mistaken. But to get the diploma, they have to pass each of those six exams with the four or higher, plus pass the class.
And all the other costs up top, that's to the school itself.
Administrative.
Is that a problem in in any other schools that you're aware of, the, what the per cost, per student is?
I, speaking with other coordinators in the state, when the district has supported the program, it's never been a problem. There are a couple of instances where schools have tried to solicit, because the district was not supportive of the program, they tried to solicit corporate sponsoring, voluntary sponsoring, and it eventually, it just didn't last. So with the economic downfall, they a lot of, they saw their programs fall away.
So the there were some where the district was not supportive of the program?
For whatever reason, some, in some cases financially, in some cases, they just didn't feel the timing was right. So the school decided to move forward with it, and then the the funding fell away eventually.
Are these fees based on the twenty-five student figure that that you're talking about? Or is that, is that regardless of how many students are in the program?
Regardless.
So we're assuming that the district be picking up the registration and exam fees for the students?
Well, so far, the trend in the state has been whenever the state has decided to cover AP exam fees, they have also covered IB exam fees. I don't think they covered the registration, that one-time registration fee. But what's on the table right now for fourteen, fifteen is that the state might, would cover AP coursework or exams, and that they would also cover IB exams.
Yeah, it was part of last year's budget.
Dr. Sullivan, since it would be limited to twenty-five students initially.
Initially, yes.
Then if it's open to all high school students, do the students at Hogard have priority?
I don't know. I I would assume that we would just put all candidates. Well, we want our students to get the 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 most out of this, obviously.
Yes, yes.
But we need to make it available to all students. I think there, I don't know if there needs to be, I haven't looked into a quota or anything, but I think we need to look at the best fit for the students that are available for the program. So whether it be students, you know, looking at, putting a pool, pool in, uh, from all the candidates through the application process, and then going down and just picking the the twenty-five best students in the county, uh, you know, that will probably be the the best way to go because we wanted to benefit the students of the county.
And I I know that number twenty-five seems very small and and and, uh, the reason for that is that when you you decide that you want your program to go full DP, and what that means is you don't let in students who just want to dabble, take this IB course over here and this IB course over there, but you really want them to focus fully on getting that diploma. The advice I've been given is to keep it small, especially initially, keep it small, and see some success, that you can really work really closely with that cohort and get them through the diploma process and see some success there. Other schools will tell you up and down the East Coast, oh, we have a hundred kids in our IB program. They're talking about students who are called certificate students, who might find themselves in an IB course for scheduling reasons or just because the school allows them to dabble in IB. And then they can go for the exam, and they can go for the certificate, which is great. And I'm sure we'll have some students, especially in the more niche-like courses, high-level courses, who aren't full diploma students, but find themselves in that class and like it, it fits their learning style, and they want to go for the exam, and they end up with a certificate in that course, which looks great also.
So I'm hearing that this twenty-five, you want to commit to the to the diploma track, but you might open it up for some other Hogard students to pick and choose a class with as space available and schedule available.
Yes.
So you'll actually, you'll serve beyond the twenty-five, but that twenty-five is truly your core.
Right, so they'll be the ones that are really going for that that diploma. And the diploma is very similar to the North Carolina Scholars' Diploma, where it's just the these extra courses that you are taking to get this particular mark on the diploma that is the the DP, uh, diploma. So it same as, uh, in the same sense as AP, a student could take an IB course, take the test and get the credit for it, depending on how well they do on the exam at the end. So there is that option as well, so it it would spread out among that twenty-five cohort.
The initial application fee is due this March, is what I'm.
Yeah, if we are going to move forward for getting started with this in two years, to be able to offer these classes, uh, we're looking at the initial application fee is is due the end of of March.
So, board members, since this is information now, at your March meeting, we will put it on there for approval.
I guess the last question, staff training, is that seven hundred and fifty dollars each year, or is that just?
One time per person, that's the initial certification. Of course, that that doesn't include travel, you know, where they, there's a, one, they do it in different parts of the country, but that's the cost of the registration, the curriculum and everything they give. And that's just the one time for seven years, that training's good. They do offer free, there's a a free thing coming up in Charlotte in a couple of months, just for information purpose. So they typically have training going on throughout the year, throughout the the country.
And so what do we, uh, I guess we can't require teachers who commit to this to stay committed for seven years.
Well, that, I think that's something we would have to take into account as we go through the application process and which teachers we want. We want teachers that are committed to the program. And obviously, you know, we want to get as long, we want to hire the teachers, we want the teachers there that want to be in this program. Just going to draw in a specific group of teachers, but anytime we're dealing with teachers, things happen, you have to move. So there will be some replacement along the way that we have to do. Uh, but, you know, we would like to train as many people and provide these, uh, not necessarily the certification training, but just the training that we can provide for the best practices that the program teaches as well. Now, one of the things we do have to look at, we've got a a great group of teachers that are very interested in Hogard, uh, but we might also have to look at if we find a certain area, such as math, where we don't have as many teachers that are interested in this program, we might have to look outside of getting those teachers that might be in the district but want to come in to work with this program. Because it does take a very certain skill set for teachers to be able to teach in this.
I will say too, the track record, as I speak with coordinators across the state and and along the East Coast, I ask them, well, what do you do if you if you certify a teacher in that first round and they decide, this isn't for me? And they said, oh, that just never happens. So, that that gave me peace of mind that, uh, even, I visited Broughton, the teachers who were in the program there have been in the program since they got to Broughton, and and I think they'll retire in that program. So for the teachers as well, I think it fits, it it can serve the the teachers just as well as it can serve the students.
I want to take an opportunity to thank you for bringing this to the board. I think, uh, Dale will tell you that I advocated for the IB program, uh, what, five, six, eight, ten years? I mean, every time I go to a national conference, I come back with all the brochures and say, you know, we need to try this, we need to try this. I have two questions, so I I would like to ask. Number one, is this a class, the cohort, will they have a designated meeting area or will they move from class to class like other students do? And just when this cohort comes into a teacher's classroom, it's an IB class as opposed to?
They they will move throughout the building just like everybody else. It'll be, uh, not a special designated IB area of the school or anything like that. Now, we will have to do some scheduling differences because a lot of these IB programs are year-long, so we might have to look at AB schedules or different things, but that's something we can work out within there. But it'll basically be the same as every other student in the school.
The other question I have is a similar program to this, and I just, I asked simply to find out if it was explored, and that is the, uh, Cambridge, uh, program, which is very similar to the IB program.
I've heard about the Cambridge program, but it's not something that we've explored as a school. Uh, when I came on and and, uh, over the summer to the position, it was, you know, we were talking about the signature program, and I had half a dozen teachers come to me about this particular program. So there was an automatic interest there, so we kind of picked up from there because we weren't getting a whole lot of feedback in any other programs. So we kind of picked up the ball from there and started rolling down the court with that. And, uh, it's really picked up momentum, and it's kind of been, you know, we've looked at STEM and some other things, but just for our particular program in school, we felt this was going to be the best fit. But no, we've not looked at the Cambridge program.
Okay, I I just, just, just asking, just for comparison.
Any other comments, questions? Well, it sounds very exciting, and thank you, we look forward to having it on the agenda, uh, in March.
We're very excited, thank you for having us.
Thank you for the presentation. Ben asked at this time to take a short break, so we'll take a short five-minute break.